Good morning and welcome to the Pitt County Board of Commissioners meeting this morning. I'd like to welcome all of you in the audience and those of you by way of television, welcome. At this time we just call the meeting to order. Those that are present, please raise your right hand. Those that have... Thank you very much, all of here. At this time we should have the invocation and pledge. The invocation by Commissioner Garrish and pledge by Commissioner Huggins.
Father, once again, we thank you for the opportunity we have of serving this great county and serving the wonderful citizens of Pitt County. We thank you, Father, for the blessings that you have bestowed upon us each and every day. We pray now that you might be with us as we go through this agenda this morning. Help us to make those decisions that would please you and those that would be the best for the citizens that we represent. We thank you, Father, for each one of those that will be receiving the service awards this morning, their commitment to the county and their commitment to doing their best for the citizens of our community. These blessings we pray in your holy name, amen.
Amen. Please face the flag. Our flag is a flag to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment. I normally wouldn't say this, but this is not a place to protest the National Anthem. And when somebody sits during it, it alienates me. You may think you're smart, but you're not.
At this time we should have the approval...
Motion to approve the agenda.
Sa'akam.
It has been moved and properly seconded, the agenda be approved. Those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Those opposed. As have it. Moving on, we should have a public hearing at this time and a public hearing and authorization, resolution of Pitt Area Transit. Cam Conbon, if you would come at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is our annual request for authorization to receive and to apply and to receive 5311 funds, which annually funds our capital replacement vehicles and other capital expenses that we request to the NCDOT and to the Federal Transit Administration and also for the administrative side of the 5311 funds.
This funding, as Cam said, will become part of the fiscal year '18-'19 budget for July 1 of the following year. NCDOT on the state level has their process a whole lot earlier in the year than normally we would deal with in the springtime.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of this resolution for the CTP Foundation.
I second it.
It has been moved and properly seconded.
Were you supposed to have a public hearing?
That's... I was thinking a public hearing was in order to open.
Is it? Okay. Well, I'll put a hold on my motion.
At this time we should have the public hearing open. Have anyone signed up?
No, Mr. Chairman, nobody's signed up.
No one signed up to speak at the public hearing. Now declare the public hearing closed. Again, now your recommendation?
Yes. It's to a move that we approve the CTP Foundation request for funds.
And it has been seconded. Those in favor of the said motion, let it be known by raising your right hand. Those opposed. As have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time we should have the presentation of the Pitt County Employee of the Year Award by Joyce Jones, if she's here.
Good morning.
Morning.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, fellow county commissioners and county manager and attorney. Thank you for having me here this morning. I'm really excited to be here this morning to be able to present award to Pitt County Government. Strife has been in operation since May of 2000 and we are proud and happy to be able to present to the Pitt County Government for your partnership and with us since we started in May of 2000. LIFE appreciates your partnership. You have been instrumental in providing job training opportunities, part-time and full-time in various departments such as the Pitt County Planning Department, the Pitt County Solid Waste Department, Pitt County Department of Social Services, Building and Grounds Department. Several of our employees would not have had the opportunity to be able to be taxpaying citizens had you not opened your doors and given them the opportunity. For that, we are eternally thankful. I have with me today one of our board members, Stephanie Hennessy, who is the immediate past chairperson of our board and has been serving for several years. So have some members of your employees have served on our board and we appreciate that involvement. So today, we'd like to present to you in recognition, LIFE of NC, which that's our actual legal name, which now is LIFE of NC, Life Empowerment Center, would like to present. And I'd like for a representative to come up, if you would, to present this 2007 Emplorey of the Year Award presented to Pitt County Government in recognition of our outstanding workforce development efforts and valuable partnership presented on September 14, 2017. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Thank you so much.
I want to thank you very much.
All right. Thank you so much.
For this presentation.
Thank you. And I particularly want to thank Mr. James Rhodes. He's been an instrumental part in making sure that I connect with every department that has an opportunity for our individuals to be able to volunteer and to be able to assist in this effort. So the whole county has been benefited by these efforts and I thank you for that.
Thank you. I want to thank you for your service in Pitt County, the hard work that you're doing for Strife and LIFE of America and North Carolina. You're doing a very good job and those of you who missed the banquet that you just recently had, it was very good, very, very well, a very good speaker. So we appreciate all the hard work that you're doing for those who just want a second chance and so you're doing a great job.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
At this time we should have this service award presentation. I could have got a motion to...
Sa'akam.
Seconded.
It has been moved and properly seconded, we received the service awards. At this time, those in favor, let it be known by raising the right hand. Thank you.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Once again, it's our quarterly privilege to recognize the workforce of Pitt County Government and to call you up by the five-year increments of your service to the county and we really appreciate what you do for the citizens and for the organization. We will begin with the five-year. We're going to recognize five, 10, 15, and 25 years this morning, but beginning with the five-year service awards if Tabitha Alton, Plant Department, will come forward. Octavius Barfield, Solid Waste. Thurman Council, Solid Waste. Tammy Reeves, Public Health. Next one could not attend, but Kathy Shepherd, Public Health. Levion Smith, Solid Waste. A lot of folks here this morning, but nobody's coming up. Allison Swart, Public Health.
She was the best attendance of all.
Amber Taylor, Sheriff's Office. Thomas Tyson, Detention Center. In our last five years to Janash... Janasha Woolard, Social Services.
Get it right.
A round of applause for this group. All right, moving into the 10-year category, Jan Aklin, Pats, Pitt Area Transit System. Next, we have Paul M. Andrews, Soil and Water, otherwise known as PJ.
That might have been easier to speak.
Yeah. Queen Guan, Social Services, Gaia.
She's not here.
Carol Haywood, Corporate Extension. Jimmy Hodges, E-911 Communications. Karen Johnson, Social Services. Lisa Mercer, Detention Center. James Peterson, Pats, Pitt Area Transit System. Rebecca Rogers, Tax Administration. Next, Robin Tant, Public Health, could not attend. And our last 10-year award is to Kimberly Ward, Public Health. Is she here this morning?
She's not here.
Okay. A round of applause. All right, we have a large group of 15 years. First, Johnny Barnhill, Animal Services. Channing Ford, Veteran Services. Leanne Gaber Wisman, Detention Center. Ann Heath, Tax Administration. Oscar Howard, Emergency Management. Melanie Perry, Detention Center. Ralph Porter, Emergency Management. Nancy Poston, Detention Center. Raymond Revilla, Tax Administration. Brian Roberts, Sheriff's Office. Marilyn Russell, Detention Center. Paul Sands, Detention Center. Josephus Toll, Detention Center. And the next two could not attend, Francine Winstead, Tax Administration, and Michelle Whaley, Animal Services. A round of applause. And our last three are actually 20-year awards. I think I read off, it's like 25 to begin with, but in the... Oh, it's on the other side. I apologize. You have both, okay. So 25-year awards, silver box represents a watch the employees picked out that they get to receive at 20-year mark with their tenure with Pitt County Government. First, we have Scotty McKinney with MIS, Management Information Services. Congratulations. Marshall Vines, Sheriff's Office. And Patrina Vines, Human Resources. Give a round of applause, please. And now for our next category, 25 years. Lori Burrows, E-911 Communications. Margarita Howard, Social Services. Carolyn Garris, Soil and Water.
Carolyn, you look mighty good, Carolyn.
Helen Bryant, Emergency Management. Stephen Cannon, Solid Waste. And Mary Shelton, Sheriff's Office. Ann Shelton. And that's our 25-year category. We do have 130-year recognition this morning out of the register of deeds, Karen Ennis. She will come forward. Congratulations.
I want to say that this has been one of the largest services award reception that we've had, I think, that I can remember. And all of you are deserving and we wish you well. We wish you well, it continues. Some of you may be leaving, but some of you are going to be here and continue to serve the county and we certainly appreciate all the hard work that you've done and we congratulate you again. Let's give them a big round of applause. We do have a reception in the back of the county commissioner seats in the reception area and ask all of you at this time, will you please come and join us for the reception over to my end in the back of me in the rear. Thank you very much. We have public address to the board at this time.
Mr. Chairman, nobody's signed up unless there's somebody in the audience who would like to come forward.
Here nine, we shall proceed to the items for report. Kathy Booker.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The combined collection rate through the end of September was 65.91 versus a year ago, which was 67.13. And we are still trailing behind for two reasons. One, if you'll look, your levy is higher than last year's levy. And we've collected, actually collected more, but with the levy being higher, it shows the rate lower. Also, you have a section in your report of public service, a note on that. We normally bill those at the first of October, and we got those billed in at the end of September. So we don't have any problem collecting the public service bills, but that's over a million dollars. And you should see a tightening of the collection rate closer to the year before next collection report.
Very good.
I move for acceptance.
Second.
I second.
As I'm moving properly, second that we accept the report. All in favor, let me know by raising the right hand. Those are polled.
Thank you.
Thank you. Manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item A on the manager's report, next meeting dates for the month of November, you'll have the regular meeting schedule on the 6th and 20th at 9:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., respectfully. Item B, if we can ask James Rhodes to come to the podium, wanted to ask him to give a report on the designation from the American Planning Association, and maybe a recap of the event Saturday that was very, very successful. We've got a video to show as well.
Very good. Thank you, Scott. We did have a great event for our Great Places designation on Saturday. There were a number of folks that were instrumental in making it happen. We had a big turnout for kind of a dreary morning. We kept thinking, we were telling our out-of-town guests that it's going to break, it's going to clear up. Well, it didn't until about 10:30 or 11:00. But it was cooler, and we had a great day. We had our American Planning Association president in town. She chose to come to Pitt County. There are 15 great places throughout the nation that were selected this year. She came here via Denver on Friday night to be here on Saturday morning, and then turn around and go to Indianapolis that afternoon. So she was great, great person. I met her a couple of weeks ago, and she thoroughly enjoyed it. Sent me a message afterwards. She wants to use us here in Pitt County as kind of the model for a lot of other rural communities in how to have public spaces that are open and available to folks to make folks' life better, better quality of life. And again, we had just a great turnout, a lot of folks. Thank you to all the commissioners that were able to make it out. This will live in perpetuity also, because I will put a plug in for our Public Information Office. They have been outstanding. You'll see a video in a minute. Alice and I kind of laughed because we weren't on our A-game when this was taped. They actually made it look presentable. So we've had a great time with a number of events out there. If you were able to stay that afternoon, a lot of things going on, just a lot of activity. And our new natural trail, and again, thank you to the board on this, this was put in place after our 2015 master plan that we adopted for the district park. One of our first things was to use the wooded area that's kind of lying fallow in the back. We've got a great natural trail. It's about a mile and a half or a mile and a quarter, I should say, that loops around through the woods, just a great place to go, especially on those very hot summer days. You'll have a lot more shade in those areas. So if you're out and about, the leaves will be turning soon. Come out and enjoy that natural trail. So just to back up a little bit, we were one of 15 communities throughout the nation that were selected as a great place this year. We were one of five that was considered to be a recipient of the Great Public Spaces category. To bring it home to North Carolina, this is the fifth award in North Carolina, the first public space award for our state. So we're very proud of that. My pastor says we can be proud about certain things. We're very proud of bringing this to Pitt County. So just to read the designation here, this is straight from the American Planning Association for the County Home Complex, Pitt County, North Carolina, is one of the Great Places in America 2017. So I'd just like to acknowledge Alice Keans in the audience this morning, certainly a big part of our County Home Complex is, I say, the cornerstone is our district park there. That is her namesake. So we've got a number of other items that we're trying to fulfill out there. Our top priority, you've heard it from us time and again, is the gymnasium. We've got a lot of good support for that. We're working with some of our legislators. Did I say gym? It's actually an emergency shelter slash safe room. And we're looking at funding to try to get that in place out at our district park as soon as possible, because we've got a lot of folks that could use that. So with that, we've got a video unless anybody has any questions. They left me in charge of queuing this up.
There's something for everybody. There's something for all ages, and that's what's, that's one of the beauties of the complex.
This is a destination. This is a place where people can come and be involved with a number of activities, whether they're visiting the animal shelter, then to the farmer's market, and then coming for a walk in the district park.
People have a one-stop place basically out here now.
They had their sights on really developing this wonderful neighborhood.
Currently, we have the Pitt County Council on Aging, the Senior Center, Community Schools and Recreation Center with our district park. We have our community garden, which has been a tremendous resource and asset for Pitt County. On the west side of our complex, we have the Animal Services with Animal Shelter and Stay Today. We have our farmer's market, which has recently been expanded. We have our Eastern Carolina Village in
Well, now, back to open session. We have public address to the board at this time.
Mr. Chairman, nobody's signed up unless there's somebody in the audience who would like to come forward.
Here nine, we shall proceed to the items for report. Kathy Booker.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The combined collection rate through the end of September was sixty-five point nine one versus a year ago, which was sixty-seven point one three. And we are still trailing behind for two reasons. One, if you'll look, your levy is higher than last year's levy. And we've collected, actually collected more, but with the levy being higher, it shows the rate lower. Also, you have a section in your report of public service, a note on that. We normally bill those at the first of October, and we got those billed in at the end of September. So we don't have any problem collecting the public service bills, but that's over a million dollars. And you should see a tightening of the collection rate closer to the year before next collection report.
Very good.
I move for acceptance.
Second.
I second.
As they're moving properly, second that we accept the report. All in favor, let be known by raising the right hand. Those opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nine's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item A on the manager's report, next meeting dates for the month of November, you'll have the regular meeting schedule on the sixth and twentieth at 9:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., respectfully. Item B, if we can ask James Rhodes to come to the podium, wanted to ask him to give a report on the designation from the American Planning Association and maybe a recap of the event Saturday that was very, very successful. We've got a video to show as well.
Very good. Thank you, Scott. We did have a great event for our Great Places designation on Saturday. There were a number of folks that were instrumental in making it happen. We had a big turnout for kind of a dreary morning. We kept thinking, we were telling our out-of-town guests that it's going to break, it's going to clear up. Well, it didn't until about ten-thirty or eleven, but it was cooler and we had a great day. We had our American Planning Association president in town. She chose to come to Pitt County. There are fifteen great places throughout the nation that were selected this year. She came here via Denver on Friday night to be here on Saturday morning and then turn around and go to Indianapolis that afternoon. So she was great, great person. I met her a couple of weeks ago and she thoroughly enjoyed it, sent me a message afterwards. She wants to use us here in Pitt County as kind of the model for a lot of other rural communities and how to have public spaces that are open and available to folks to make folks' life better, better quality of life. And again, we had just a great turnout, a lot of folks. Thank you to all the commissioners that were able to make it out. This will live in perpetuity also, because I will put a plug in for our Public Information Office. They have been outstanding. You'll see a video in a minute. Alice and I kind of laughed because we weren't on our A-game when this was taped. They actually made it look presentable. So we've had a great time with a number of events out there. If you were able to stay that afternoon, a lot of things going on, just a lot of activity. And our new natural trail, and again, thank you to the board on this, this was put in place after our 2015 master plan that we adopted for the district park. One of our first things was to use the wooded area that's kind of lying fallow in the back. We've got a great natural trail. It's about a mile and a half or a mile and a quarter, I should say, that loops around through the woods, just a great place to go, especially on those very hot summer days. You'll have a lot more shade in those areas, so if you're out and about, the leaves will be turning soon. Come out and enjoy that natural trail. So just to back up a little bit, we were one of fifteen communities throughout the nation that were selected as a great place this year. We were one of five that was considered to be a recipient of the Great Public Spaces category. To bring it home to North Carolina, this is the fifth award in North Carolina, the first public space award for our state. So we're very proud of that. My pastor says we can be proud about certain things. We're very proud of bringing this to Pitt County. So just to read the designation here, this is straight from the American Planning Association for the County Home Complex, Pitt County, North Carolina, is one of the great places in America 2017. So I'd just like to acknowledge Alice Keen's in the audience this morning, certainly a big part of our County Home Complex is, I say the cornerstone, is our district park there. That is her namesake. So we've got a number of other items that we're trying to fulfill out there. Our top priority, you've heard it from us time and again, is the gymnasium. We've got a lot of good support for that. We're working with some of our legislators. Did I say gym? It's actually an emergency shelter slash safe room. And we're looking at funding to try to get that in place out at our district park as soon as possible because we've got a lot of folks that could use that. So with that, we've got a video unless anybody has any questions. They left me in charge of queuing this up.
There's something for everybody. There's something for all ages, and that's what, that's one of the beauties of the complex.
This is a destination. This is a place where people can come and be involved with a number of activities, whether they're visiting the animal shelter, then to the farmer's market, and then coming for a walk in the district park.
People have a one-stop place basically out here now.
They had their sights on really developing this wonderful neighborhood.
Currently, we have the Pitt County Council on Aging, the Senior Center, Community Schools and Recreation Center with our district park. We have our community garden, which has been a tremendous resource and asset for Pitt County. On the west side of our complex, we have the Animal Services with Animal Shelter and Stay Today. We have our farmer's market, which has recently been expanded. We have our Eastern Carolina Village and Farm Museum, which is another great addition to our complex. And then we have two elementary schools. We also have recycling and solid waste. And for recycling, this is the largest recycling and solid waste center in our county. Pitt County has been so fortunate with our departments working together. We didn't have money to go out and hire a commercial planner to do our master plan. So what we did was the planning department, Community Schools and Recreation, worked along with East Carolina, with our Recreation and Leisure Studies Department, and did our first plan and updated that plan in 2003, and then again in 2015. And those plans were very key in developing not only the park, but in further developing the whole complex.
Planning's involvement certainly started with a mapping exercise, what's currently on site. So it's not, not unlike a lot of other planning exercises we go through, what's the existing lay of the land, what are the existing land uses? So after mapping that out, it then showed where areas of expansion could be for any of these uses. How could other uses come in? How do they interplay? And especially, how do they interconnect? We've had a lot of good success in getting some of these uses better connected through walkways and paths, given that the large parcel is bisected by County Home Road. A crosswalk with DOT's assistance in getting that established is something that you just won't see in many areas. So all these things started working together. That's when all these different partners started talking and wanting to make sure we've got a healthy area for folks to come and a very safe area too, where we've got even some kindergartners crossing the road to get to some of the activities on the opposite side. It's easy even riding by on County Home Road and seeing folks stay here for a while, watch a ballgame, go on a walk, get involved in the community garden, visit farmer's markets, just so many activities out here, and that's what we want to continue to see grow.
What a wonderful way to continue the legacy of our forefathers, who bought this property who originally it was, it was for the health and wellness of the citizens in our county. And when we look back today, we see that same kind of care from our county that we are providing, many services that contribute to health and wellness. So across the lifespan, we are continuing that legacy of the county, taking care of its citizens. If you could put a banner across what we do in the County Home Complex, it's about any smart move you want, and all the different components that, that filter into that opportunity for our county.
And again, I'll just highlight our Public Information Office. All three of them, Mike, Carla, and Kyle, have been instrumental in helping us brand this area as well. You'll be seeing a lot of logos and other things coming out because this complex is someplace that we want to bring folks out to. It's a lot of activities out there for anybody, young, old, and in between. So again, thank you for your support and I hope you'll come and join us on a nature trail sometime soon. Thank you.
Thank you, James, for your job well done. And thank you, Alice, and your staff for job well done.
I wanted to ask, Mr. Rhodes, whose drone did you use for the aerial views? Whose drone did you use for those excellent aerial views?
It was a contractor.
Okay.
Properly licensed contractor.
Mr. Chairman.
Very, very good report.
I want to say that I really want to commend James Rhodes and for us for using our own, and Alice Keen said, using the planning department to do this. They didn't have money to go out and use, get a consultant or whatever to, to, to do this. And that was, I think, need to be expressed and, and somebody else could take, take a clue from you on that. I won't mention that governing entity. But anyway, I think that was very smart to use your own, our own planning department to, to, to do this.
Thank you very much. Again, thank you very much for all you do, Alice, and James, for, for that county complex. You're doing a great job, fantastic job.
Mr. Chairman, I have two other things I just wanted to announce real quickly. On Friday, we received notice from the Greenville City Mayor's Office regarding an event that the mayor is holding tonight. It's called Tribute to Women in Government. It will be at 6:00 p.m. in the City Council Chambers at 200 West Fifth Street, and they're inviting the commissioners to attend this. And it says it will feature a panel discussion with community leaders that highlight women in leadership roles, give them the opportunity to share their experiences. So we want to pass it on to you. And again, 6:00 p.m. tonight, City Council Chambers. And the other thing I want to report on was, as you're aware, I think we, we made mention in the last meeting, that we would begin testing of the radio and paging enhancements that are being put in place. We had our first full week of, of testing last week, and things are going very well. The system is, appears to be performing as designed. We're completing, we're going into the second week of testing this week, and we'll have a full report for you to give you all the details and specifications and whatnot on it, but want to let you know that it's going very well.
Items for consent.
Motion to approve.
Second.
As they're moving properly, second that we approve item for consent. All in favor, let be known by raising your right hand. Those opposed. I have it. Thank you. Item for decision at this time, application for waiver of delictant motor vehicle interest. Kathy, come back.
I was looking to see if Ms. Tarchia Cogdale was here, but I, she is not here that I can see.
I believe, Mr. Chairman, that the information provided in the agenda with the recommendation from the county manager's staff would warrant the motion to approve this, and I saw a move.
I second it.
Mr. Chairman, you'll need to make an exception to your policy because it says the person has to be in attendance at the meeting, so just note that.
But she lives in New York. She does not.
Not now.
Okay. Anyway, I agree with Mark's motion, and we can add the exception. I would sure to be a part of seconding that.
With the exception that's added, that we approve this motion, all in favor, said motion, let it be known by, with that as an exception, raise your right hand. Those opposed? I have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Greenville Metropolitan Planning Organization, we have James Rhodes come.
Good morning. We're pleased to have Ryan Pertle, who is our new transportation planner, back with us this morning. You might recall he was here about a month ago concerning another transportation plan. This one ties well right back to our County Home Complex in that this is our Active Transportation Master Plan, and this is really for planning efforts based on, if you look at the screen, you can see we've got everything from bikers to walkers. This is to get alternate transportation available to folks. One big thing that Alice and I have pushed for over the last few years is to get the Greenville Greenway system connected to the County Home Park. We were able to get that in the current Greenway plan. It has now been transferred over to this plan, so we've got copies of these plans. If you move forward this morning, we'll make sure you have them. And one of the top priorities is to get that connection to the County Home Complex. That will be vital in getting people walking and biking out to that site more safely, I should say. So with that, I would like to acknowledge that there have been quite a number of county officials involved in this plan, and Allison Swart is here from Public Health, and she was instrumental in getting the county a walkability grant, and several members from the county have served on that along with DOT, and they have worked hard to ensure some elements were included in the plan. Alice is here as well, also our county engineer. Tim Corley has been involved. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ryan for his presentation. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Commissioner, board members. I'd like to begin with congratulating the county on a well-earned designation from the American Planning Association. Those awards are very difficult to get, so it really is a testament to the county's planning efforts and all the hard work from all the employees that go into that. As Mr. Rhodes said, I am with the Greenville MPO. That is a collection of municipal organizations, the city of Greenville, Pitt County, the city of, or town of Winterville, the town of Aiden, and the village of Simpson. In August of 2016, the city as lead planning agency contracted Alta Planning to begin updating the 2011 bicycle and pedestrian plan, and that has now been renamed the Active Transportation Plan. The project vision statement for this plan, "The greater Greenville area will offer residents and visitors many options for walking and bicycling through well-designed and beautifully maintained Greenway trails and through walkable bicycle-friendly streets. People of all ages, abilities, and incomes will be able to safely and conveniently get to where they want to go." Here we have listed the, the goals for this plan, "To enhance connectivity, to create positive economic impact, protect the environment, promote equity, enhance health, increase safety, and increase livability." And one thing I do want to note, while the plans for the city of Greenville are included on this slide, we incorporated all of the community plans from every member of the MPO in, in creating this document. And through this process, we found that there was no other single type of investment, Active Transportation being the goal, that touches so many key community issues. Some goals for the Active Transportation Plan, gains in bike safety are especially important for low-income riders and riders of color. We wanted to create a network that is accessible for all riders, no matter who they are. More people ride when cities build protected bike lanes, creating a comfortable network that all riders are able to utilize. Most people are interested or concerned about biking, and with higher comfort facilities, they would be able to. And what that focused on incorporating these people that would bike if they were more comfortable or felt safer doing it, and that's what we really wanted to target here. Here is the process we went through in creating this document. Like I said, this process kicked off in April 2016, so it's been a, a very long process going. We've had over thirty steering committee members, and that was made up of community members, local staff from all of the municipalities, citizens, business owners, and EV staff from ECU that got involved. We had five different steering committee meetings, two hundred comments through the online input mat, five input stations that were set up throughout the MPO, three outreach sessions at local events, they were at Pirate Fest, Pirate Fest last spring, four draft and final plan presentations, and over a thousand different public comments were involved. That was the, the final tally of how many people got involved, and as many of you are aware, just getting, you know, a hundred or a couple hundred is an involved process. So getting a thousand really showed how many, how much people really wanted to be involved in creating this Active Transportation Network. An overwhelming percentage of these people stated that development of an Active Transportation Network is very important to them. The plan that we have provided the, the planning department, this is the cover sheet, and it's very involved and very inclusive, and it has about seven different chapters that get very in-depth on how we created this plan and how we wish to move forward with implementing it. This is how we came up with the recommendations through community and public input, different destinations that we wanted to connect, mapping analysis, existing plans and facilities that are already there, and any routes that are currently being planned or, or already implemented. One of the key things we wanted to look at when we developed this plan was equity among all citizens throughout the MPO. So what we did, we had a heat map created for six different demographic features to sort of streamline how we connect areas and, and value where they want to go. These different demographics were poverty status, who had vehicle access, non-white population, limited English proficiency population, no high school diploma, children and seniors. Chapters three and four really focus on what is existing and what is planned, and it goes into some very, some very useful graphics of what cross-sections will look like in the future, what we have planned out, and what is already there. The meat and potatoes of this plan, excuse my euphemism, comes through chapters three and five, where they map the entire network of what is planned and what is already there, and shows a very nice graphic of how that is going to be incorporated over time. And then there was twenty-six priority projects that were identified for implementation over the life of this plan. And these projects are gone very in-depth of who is going to be involved with implementing these projects, who are the stakeholders of this project, and it gives an overall cost estimate of this project in future dollars, which is very key in implementing them. At the very end of this plan, they have recommendations, and they're based on four different categories, policy, programmatic, design, and implementation. Here, we have listed, and in the plan, we go into much more in-depth on this, but these are who's going to be key in implementing this plan, Division Two of NCDOT, the MPO, several private partners, advisory groups, residents, regional partners, and of course, the engineering consultants that are brought in to help all of the local municipalities through the process. One of the things we wanted to highlight with this plan was what are the benefits moving forward? And these are a list of annual benefits that if the plan is implemented, we would gain. Over six hundred and forty thousand more bicycle trips, over three million more walking trips, eight hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars in health benefits annually, a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars in environmental benefits annually, and over six million dollars in transportation benefits annually. That equals to over seven million in total benefits annually to the MPO and the members. The next steps for this adoption, this, as we stated, is a critical update to the 2011 Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan. The steering committee unanimously recommended this plan for adoption to all of its, the MPO's members. The TCC and TAC that Commissioner Charles Farley is actually the chairman of, of the Greenville Urban AirPO, MPO unanimously recommended this plan for adoption. And one key note for this is while adoption does not dedicate specific funding, but rather indicates a willingness to support the plan's recommended projects and programs over time. And one key item that I also wanted to highlight was the appendix that is included with each one, and why this is important and why we wanted to get this to everybody was the first half of this appendix, Appendix A, is all of the public input that was involved during this, this process. All one thousand, over one thousand comments that the public gave during this is included and cataloged in this document. And then Appendix B is actually a design toolbox that gives best practices moving forward of how Greenville should design and implement these projects. Including in your agendas, there's a resolution at the board's discretion, the MPO requests that the board resolve to adopt this plan. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions, comments? I have one question. Is Tim Corley still here? Tim, would you attempt a bicycle from your home to Alice Keen Park? Yes or no?
Yes. Yeah, I, I tried that the other day. You have to have a death wish, so I, so I hope that is high on our priorities, Bells Fork area.
Correct. And with the student development that's out there, we wanted to connect all these people so they can as well. Just a little personal experience, the APA conference was in town as well, and I biked thirteen miles as a part of that conference throughout some of the most dangerous roads throughout the county, so it gave a little more perspective to what we're trying to do here and how we're trying to provide safety.
Having said that, of course, you have my endorsement.
It's the commission, Gary.
I think that to let the public know why we, why I'm supporting this plan is, I was actually amazed at that third whereas, where it says whereas there are more, there were more than, or there were ninety-two reported crashes in Greenville that involved a bicyclist or pedestrian in 2016 alone, one year, that resulted in thirty-seven disabling injuries and five fatalities. I actually had no idea that it was that high. So that lets me know we need to be doing something.
Other comments? We get a motion?
I made a motion. Will you approve? Second.
Moving properly, second that we approve this plan. Those opposed in favor, let be known by raising the right hand. Those opposed. I have it. Thank you very much for the fine presentation, sir.
Thanks, Jimmy.
Moving on to the appointment of the advisory, Animal Service Advisory Board.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Michelle Whaley is recommending Andrea Williams to fill the at-large seat previously held by William Sargentson.
I move to accept the recommendation of Andre Williams to the Americans, I mean the Animal Service Regulatory Board. the Animal Service Regulatory Board. Second motion.
Moving properly, second that we accept this recommendation.
Good thing this is the last.
Those in favor, say the motion, let it be known by raising your right hand. Those oppose? As have it. Commissioner, comment? Or stop? Commissioner Huggins?
No comment.
No comment.
No comment.
I like, I like to get my copy of the plan today, if I can, and I want to thank whomever it is that's involved with cutting the weeds out of the median on Memorial Drive. I'm very conscious about that, and I'm just happy that you are cutting the weeds from around the bridges, because it does say that we care about our county and our landscaping.
No comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to report out that we're very excited of the grant that we're getting to help clean out the Continia Creek and start mitigating some flooding issues we're having down in Griff, and especially for people that live nearby there. It's long overdue, so I'm glad we're receiving that, and glad we're supporting this MPO project, because one thing that we didn't really discuss was young professionals are looking for things like this. If we're going to locate businesses here and then bring professionals here and retain our young professionals that are graduating from East Carolina, these are the kind of things that they're looking for to keep them local, because they want things to do with their families outside. They want to be able to get out and ride a bike or run on a greenway and go more than just a half-mile circle. They really want a nice things. And when I've traveled to other cities, it's really a focal point of their municipalities and their counties, is their green spaces and their greenways where the community can come together. So I'm very excited of the progress that we're making. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to point out, it is also good for our old professionals, too.
I agree.
I move for adjournment.
I second.
As it's been moving properly, second that we adjourn this meeting at this time, all in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Those oppose? You're now adjourned.